Good evening and welcome to the February 20, excuse me, 12th meeting of the Solon Board of Education. Call the roll, please. Calling the meeting to order, will you call the roll, Mr. Pecan?
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Here.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Here.
Mrs. Clavon.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Patton.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first opportunity for public comment. In accordance with Board policy 0169, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting. Participants may be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. Anonymous statements are not permitted. No person may address or question Board members individually as the Board does not directly address public comment. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak have had an opportunity to have been heard. In order for the Board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation will be permitted at each meeting. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the Board. Just as a point of reference, Board members do receive and review the agenda and accompanying explanation during the week prior to the Monday Board meeting. At this time, if anyone has anything that they would like to bring to public comment, please step to the microphone. Seeing none, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. Moving into the Treasurer's Report, approval of minutes of the special and regular meetings. Recommended motion to approve the minutes of the special and regular meetings of January 22nd, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Patton.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Bremowitz. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, Mr. Pecanowicz, follow the roll, please.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Oh, same here.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item two, recommended action to approve the payment of bills totaling $348,000, $38,348.77.39, as noted in the attachment. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Heckman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes, Ms. Clavon, a large portion of this is for replacement school buses, and these are the buses that were approved last year around this time we had authorization to go out for bid, to go through this for last year. The delays are so long because of supply chain issues and things like that, we are just now getting the buses from last year. And if you recall from the report that we gave earlier, we're not going to be purchasing buses for the next year. Our fleet is in, our fleet is in, is in good enough shape where we're not going to need to buy replacement buses for that year, for next year. So it's a way that we can save some money and divert it towards our delivery truck that we use to bring food around to the buildings that is currently not working. So that's where the bulk of the money is in this particular approval of bills.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Pecan?
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item three, property value complaints. Recommended action to approve the filing of six property valuation complaint resolutions as a result of House Bill 126, as attached. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Heckman. Second by Mr. Patton.
Yes, this is, this is something new that is required now that as a district we take to our Board of Education, but this is not anything new based on the practice that our school district has been following, undertaking for decades. Obviously, Solon City School District, as well as other schools districts, public school districts across the state, you have the real estate taxing component to the school's revenue. Will you pay your tax bill based on the value of your home or the value of your business? And when you pay that tax bill, a large portion of that tax bill is then paid to the county and then the county pays the school district as well as other governmental entities. And what we like to do is make certain that all property is taxed in a fair and consistent manner. And what's the most logical, fair, and consistent manner out there? The most transparent, which is sales value. You bought a house for $600,000, you should, you would pay taxes, you would think you would pay taxes based on the $600,000 value. A $200,000 home you purchase, it's sold for $200,000. It's realistic to believe that that will be the new value, the $200,000 value, right around that range, and then those taxes would be paid. So what the school district has done for years is, is we review sales values for businesses, commercial industry, as well as residential. And we're not talking about a small amount, we're talking about significant amounts that there would be, property has to equal or exceed $535,000 now, and it has to be in excess of 10% of the county valuation. So you're talking about large differences is what House Bill 126 calls for, for us to be able to file on. And that's exactly what we're filing on here. There are six property values, all commercial, and we're filing complaint to get them back to the sales price, what they had purchased the business for, so that they are paying just as most across the, across the city, commercial and residential, paying what their property value is worth. Now, again, everybody has the right, commercial, residential. If I, if I have a home in Solon and I buy it and it's $300,000, and then all of a sudden I didn't know that I had massive mold issues, a couple walls fell in, and I need, and I, and my property is devalued down to, instead of 300,000, I believe it's down to 250 or 225 or what have you. There's a process for that. There's a process that you go through with the county, and we become part of, and hey, we get that, we understand that. And that, and that would be the new market value of that property and the justification for it. But, but if you bought a house for $300,000 and you want it to be valued at $200,000 and there's no justification, it's important that everybody, everybody is treated fairly and consistently as possible, and that's what this is about. Due to House Bill 126, that was effective July 1, 2022, school districts now need to take these to the Board of Education for approval for these complaints to be filed.
But these values are much larger than what you were given.
These six, these six values are significantly larger, and these six values, if they were, if the tax bill was simply what they bought the property for, then that would generate, then that would generate an additional $492,000 a year to the district. So again, this isn't, this isn't nick one-diming, this isn't trying to search out properties and hey, this one's valued at 395,000, we think it's 400,000. That's illegal to do that because the variance isn't there. We haven't done that. We're talking about significant, we're talking about significant. Significant differences, yes, that's correct, that's correct.
So it's really our duty to-
It absolutely is.
... and make decisions with regard to-
It's 100% our duty because-
How the county looks at these as well.
It is, the county, everybody's got to exercise their due diligence, and the county does a great job.
Yeah.
But the county is unbelievably large, they have tons of properties, and if somebody isn't, isn't double-checking to make certain that, hey, sales value, that's pretty, pretty ironclad. This is what the property was sold for, this is where the value should be. And if, and somebody needs to follow up on that and, and make certain that sales price, that, that's what we need, that's, that's where it should be. And if, if we aren't doing that, then that is costing the schools money, lost revenues, and when that's costing the schools money because we are heavily reliant on taxpayer money, that's ultimately costing our taxpayer dollars who are paying based on the value of their homes.
Right.
And so we're just trying to be fair.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Mr. Pecan?
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes, thank you. Includes our Treasurer's Report, moving into the Superintendent's Report. Item one, Ohio High School Athletic Association, recommended action to approve membership in the Ohio Athletic, High School Athletic Association for the 2024-25 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Parkstall.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes, Ms. Clavon, this is something that we do annually each year. We join the Ohio High School Athletic Association. They're the ones that help us manage the referees, organizing tournaments for the state tournaments to go through that, establishing a set of rules that all districts will follow that are participating in interscholastic competitions. And so we do this each year to renew our membership to the Ohio Athletic Association, and then they, then use the, they take all the member districts, and we have a fair and balanced system of competition for our young athletes.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item two, consent resolution, recommended action to consent to the resolution of case number 123-CV-01607, and authorize the Superintendent and Treasurer to take all actions necessary to facilitate the dismissal of the matter. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Heckman, second by Mr. Patton.
Yes, Ms. Clavon, in order for us to successfully execute the, the agreement to facilitate the resolution, we need an approval from the Board to allow us to sign off on that agreement in order to dismiss the case.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item three, bid award, recommended motion to award contract to NF Mansudo Enson, lowest responsible bidder for the Lewis Elementary, 2024 roof and mechanical project in the amount of $1,432,950. Motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Heckman, second by Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes, this is part of, several meetings ago, we had asked your permission for us to go out for bids for this project. It, it was on our capital schedule of projects to do. These Lewis roofs represent the oldest and most in need of replacement roofs. It's about two-thirds of the roofs-
I was just going to say, how much is the building?
It's about two-thirds of the roofs that need to be replaced on the building will be covered through this project, and then we have another roof, one more chunk of roof that needs to get done that will hopefully, if everything works out financially, be able to put onto the agenda for next summer to go through that. But these roofs are over 30 years old, they are with, they are using a material that is no longer manufactured and is not repairable. So it is important to get these roofs replaced before something were to happen. They're not unsafe at this point, but we're trying to be as proactive as possible to make sure that we do it.
It's a big project, can that be finished in a summer?
It can, they have multiple crews that'll be working simultaneously on the roof.
And if, if I, if I may add a big thank you to the community for the permanent improvement funds that we have. Solon City Schools, we are one of the, you know, I could say few schools, but a lower percentage of schools that we are viewed as a higher wealth. And when you're viewed as a higher wealth school district, you are lower on the state facilities construction project list. That's why you will see a large number of schools that aren't deemed higher wealth across the entire state of Ohio have nice new, brand-new buildings, built 10 years ago, built 20 years ago, down at home, southeast Ohio, all the schools have brand-new buildings because the state was paying, or paid 80 or 90% of the cost of those, those buildings. And unfortunately for us, I think historically, our cost would have been 95% when we finally got to that list, which we haven't gotten there, and that's a number. And so these dollars here, we have, we've banked, we've managed through the PI levies that have been provided to us by our taxpayers, and that's how we're able to pay for this.
And I also believe this is under what we were kind of thinking we were-
It was, it was an estimate, I think we're estimated at about 1.9 million, and-
Yeah, I thought it was 1.8.
Yeah, 1.8, I was rounding. But we came in under, under our estimated budget for it.
Good, great. Any other questions? Yeah.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item four, resignations classified, recommended action to approve the resignations of the following employees, Susan Fazakis, Cedric Thomas. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Patton.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes, we wish them well as they move on to pursue other opportunities.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item five, retirement classified, recommended action to approve the retirement of Ava Stanley, media aide at Solon Middle School, effective May 31, 2024. Ms. Stanley has been with the district for 26 years. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Heckman, second by Mr. Patton.
Yes, Ms. Stanley is currently a media aide at Solon Middle School, does a fabulous job there. She was, prior to that, worked in our cafeteria system.
Chocolate chip lady.
Absolutely. She's a, she is a, she is a school treasurer that's going to be missed.
Are there any questions? Yeah.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item six, retirement certified, recommended action to approve the retirement of Sue Kenzig, science teacher at Solon High School, effective July 31, 2024. Mrs. Kenzig has been with the district for 18 years. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Parkstall.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Another great employee that is going to be greatly missed. She's been with us for a long time, has been a science teacher for many kids in the district over her time there, and we do wish her the best.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item seven, retire-rehire classified, recommended action to rehire Glenn Harwood for one year as noted in the collective bargaining agreement between the Solon Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees in compliance with Ohio Revised Code 3307.353. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Heckman, second by Mr. Patton.
Yes, this represents the final, the final of the three-meeting rule that we have to do to be in compliance of the, the law for Mr. Harwood. So we are now rehiring him for one more year, and at the end of that year, he will, he will retire. And again, the retire-rehire system is a way to allow us to save money for the district to take people that might stay longer and to have them retire, as is, as is the rule, and then we rehire them back for a shortened period of time. In the case of our classified and certified employees, it's a, it's a period of one year, and then when they leave, as opposed to them staying for three, four, or five more years at what could be the highest of their salaries, we end up saving the district money by allowing these retire-rehires to happen. Now, they still pay into state teachers' retirement when they go through it, so it's not like they're not paying into the retirement system still, but their retirement dollars that go into that go into a pool that they don't have access to initially. It, now, they're getting, they're pulling on their pension, and the monies that they're getting from us, they pay into the, the retirement system.
They're also paying, pulling in health insurance.
That is correct. They're still paying for their health insurance, absolutely.
Right, just to put that into context, over the many years that I've been, it's been into the millions of dollars.
It has been a savings of the district of millions of dollars in saved potential dollars of salary and benefits.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item eight, notice, public hearing classified, recommended action to approve the retirement and rehiring of the following individuals for the retire-rehire incentive that is part of the collective bargaining agreement between the Solon Board of Education and the Ohio Education of Public School Employees in compliance with Ohio Revised Code 3307.353, which requires the notification of a hearing to be conducted at the regularly scheduled board meeting of April 8, 2024. Those listed below are Donna Oxer and Mary Pescura. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Parkstall.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes, again, these are, as we talked about in the previous iteration, this is a, one of those meetings, the statutory meetings to go through it. So this is our first meeting, and then they will have two subsequent meetings, at which point they will be retired, and then they will rehire after we have the opportunity.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item nine, not, notice of public hearing, supervisory, and confidential employees, recommended motion to approve the retirement and rehiring of the following individuals for the district's retire-rehire incentive in compliance with Ohio Revised Code 3307.353, which requires the notification of a hearing to be conducted at a regularly scheduled board meeting of April 8, 2024. Those names are Betsy Street and Patricia Bush. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Patton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Heckman.
Yes, you'll notice that we're putting these in different, as opposed to grouping them together. It's based on class of employee.
Right.
So the retire-rehire, the retire-rehire system that is set up in our collective bargaining agreements need to be dealt with specifically with those individuals. Those would be classified employees, which include things like cafeteria workers, custodians, maintenance workers, bus drivers, clerical staff. Then you have teachers and people that are certified staff, and they're in a separate category. These individuals are supervisor and confidential employees that are not part of the collective bargaining agreement, that are employees that are outside of that. They're, they're not in administration, but they're not in, in our classified ranks, they're not covered under the collective bargaining agreement, so we have to do them in a separate agreement.
All right. A lot of familiar names tonight.
Some of them very devastating to Tim and I in particular, as they're important members of, Betsy and Patty are really important members of our team.
Do they have any interest in being a bus driver?
Well, we're going to get to that today.
We're in the hunt. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item 10, contract building substitute, recommended action to approve Paige Legowski as a contract building substitute at Lewis Elementary for the remainder of the 2023-24 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Parkstall.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes, Ms. Legowski is replacing the substitute that had resigned to pursue other opportunities, and so she's going to be filling in as that daily contracted sub that we started during COVID, that we have been continuing because substitutes are at a premium, and having one on-site every day has been very helpful for us as, as people are out.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mrs. Parkstall.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Clavon.
Yes. Item 11, substitute, recommended action to approve Emily Leitinger as a substitute on an as-needed basis for the 2023-24 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Bremowitz and second by Mr. Patton.
Yes, the list is not a list, it's a single name again this, this board meeting.
Not we have line for list.
We are, we're always looking for substitutes. It's, it's one of those areas of staffing that is, is of great concern to us. If you are interested in being a substitute, if you go online to our website and you fill out the paperwork and you have the necessary background checks and everything else done to determine that you're qualified to do it, we'll be happy to have you on board. And you too can have your name read at a board meeting. too can have your name read at a board meeting.
Hopefully on a larger list. Thanks. Any questions? Mr. Pecan.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes. Item 12, non-district pupil activity permits, 2023-24. Recommended action to approve non-district pupil activity permit contracts for the following individuals for the remainder of the 2023-24 school year, and those names are listed below. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Patton?
Second.
By Mr. Heckman, second by Mrs. Barksdale.
Yes, this is rounding out our lacrosse staff for, for our boys lacrosse. Remember, we'd, we had some coaches changing there, and we have some new people that are brought in, we're excited to have them. And again, these aren't new positions, they're not adding to positions that we didn't already have.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecan.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes. Item 13, non-district pupil activity permits, 2024-25. Recommended action to approve non-district pupil activity contracts for the following individuals for the 2024-25 school year, and they are listed below. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Barksdale?
Second.
By Mr. Patton.
Normally, these would come on a list that we would approve in the summer, but because they are new positions for head coaching for fall positions, we wanted to get them approved now so that they could start working with their respective athletes in the offseason for, you know, being in the weight room, being around with the kids to go through that. And for the, the, the OHSAA rules for the, the registered practices that they're allowed to have during these times that they would be able to do those, and that's why they are, they are here. These don't represent new jobs, and this isn't additional monies that they would be getting on top.
Right.
It's just where-
These jobs were filled-
These jobs were filled before, and these jobs will be paid out next year as appropriate. That's why it indicates for the 24-25 school year. We just wanted to get them board-approved so they could start working with the kids.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecan.
Mrs. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes. Item 14, home instruction tutor. Recommended action to approve the following individual as a home instruction tutor for the remainder of the 2023-24 school year, and that is Travis Frankhauser. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Barksdale?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Bremowitz.
Yes, these are individuals that are being approved for home instruction. When we have a student that is not able to attend school for whatever reason that happens to be, we hire a home instruction tutor to make up a portion of the time that they've missed to go through it. It's a, it's a special education, it's a special education tool that we have available to us. Once that teacher has fulfilled their obligation as the home instruction tutor for that kid, then they're done executing that duty, and they move on, and they would have to be brought back up again for a home instruction tutor for another student should that arise.
Good, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Mrs. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes. Item 15, tuition reimbursements. Recommended motion to approve tuition reimbursements to the following individuals as noted in the attachment. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Patton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heckman.
Mrs. Glavine, these were previously approved by Jeter and Mr. Craig Hurry.
Thank you, Mrs. Siegel. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Bremowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine?
Yes. That concludes our business items. Moving into information items. Item one, building usage. All outside organizations must request a building permit to utilize any district facilities. The attachment identifies permits that were approved. Item two. Mr. Bolden?
Yes, for the sixth time in the history of the competition, we have a Solon student who has won the, the theme concept, if you will, for our Red Ribbon Week. Now, the Red Ribbon Week is, is a week that we do each year to work with drug prevention and education program focused on students making healthy choices. A lot of times, we'll tie it in with our anti-bullying programs and going through that. This year, this year, the student who won, I want to make sure I get his name right, is Devonish Argwall, and this is a copy of his, of his theme that he came up. It's kind of neat. It says, "Life is a movie, film drug-free." I'm just really excited by the fact that this happens, and again, it happens often for us, that we have such talented kids with such creative ideas. It's really nice to see, you know, we always talk about the three pillars of academics, athletics, arts, and activities. Well, this is the arts part of that, and it's so nice to see these things happen for our kids to be recognized for their creativity.
All right. Item three.
Speaking of the pillars, we also have the academic pillar. This year, we have 11 Solon High School seniors have been named U.S. Presidential Scholar Candidates. To put that into perspective, this year's graduating senior class is one of our smaller classes. It's 336 students, I believe, this year, which is 70, usually it's about 70 off of our normal-sized class, and this is actually more scholar candidates than we had last year when this happened before. Again, this is the first step in this, and ultimately, there's about 161 kids nationwide. Right, there's, there's very few of them, but just the, the fact that our kids were recognized for their academic achievements to go through this, it is a feather in their caps to go over the, all the hard work that they've been doing and being successful, and the fact that we consistently have this, these kinds of numbers of kids year in and year out doing it, it's a testament to their hard work and the academic program that we have here in the district.
Absolutely. That's awesome. Thank you. Item four.
Kindergarten registration. I know we talked about this last meeting, and I'm going to talk about it at this meeting, and probably be talking about it at next meeting, well, because kindergarten registration is going to be running from March 4th through 15th. It is completely online. Online registration is going to happen starting on March 4th. There's a whole registration process for the family to complete, including submitting all the registration forms by March 15th for their children, and this is the important part, to be guaranteed a spot in your homeschool.
That's, that's the important-
That's the important part. If you register on the 16th and the 17th, we'll have a spot for you, but it might not be at your homeschool. You might have to attend school in one of the other two buildings rather than your homeschool. The reason why we do this is a staffing issue. One of the cost-saving measures that we do is we balance out our, we balance out our buildings. If we have not enough kids to support an additional teacher, we'll move that teacher or remove them from our payroll and reduce the size of our classes. But then when kids come in and we need to add them, as opposed to adding a teacher at a given homeschool, if there's open spots in another school, but that school is closed, we will divert those kids to one of our other elementary schools to balance out the, the load of kids. But if you register prior to the 15th, that will save you from having to not have your child at their homeschool. So it's really important to do that. Again, residents are encouraged to share this information with your friends and neighbors who have children that are turning age five by September 30th. The upcoming March registration window is really important for us because we use that, as I said, to help us with our staffing. We start looking at our staffing numbers usually in, in January as we look to next year. It's a year-long process that we're continually looking through them, but it's important that we get clear numbers for this, and that's why, if you have kids, tell your friends, everybody that's watching on YouTube, please make sure, register your kids in a timely fashion because we need those numbers.
And we'll remind you at the next meeting, March 2nd.
Yes, we will.
I think this is important. I don't want anyone disappointed.
Item five.
All right, show choir. Our show choir is having a spectacular season this year. They've got two grand championships and one runner-up this year so far out of three competitions, so they are batting an incredible average right now. Well, we are hosting our own, and that's going to be happening on March 2nd. It's a whole day-long event. We're going to have 15 different show choirs that are going to be there. It's an amazing performances. Show choirs, I remember when I was a kid, and we had show choir when I was a kid, and it was, they stood up there, they might have done some step-touch, step-touch, and you know, they, they had their partners to go through it, and everybody just wore a tux and a dress, and that was kind of it. That is not show choir now.
And one outfit?
One outfit. And now they are whole productions with sound, lighting, full bands, multiple costume changes, and it's just an amazing thing. It's just, it is, I, I worked the event when, when my daughter was a part of them for many years. It is, it is a spectacular day of fun if you enjoy show choir. Tickets are available right now. We'll actually be sending this out to everybody electronically, as well as have it posted on our website. It's $20 for adults and $15 for students, and that's for the entire day, for the entire day-long event. The, Solon doesn't compete on this day, but they perform the finale at the end of the night, so that usually happens around 10:30 PM. I will be watching that via the stream that happens. I will not be there for it.
Long day for everyone.
Right, but it is an amazing event, and they go all out. It's just spectacular, and I encourage everybody to attend.
Yeah, and these kids do one heck of a job, and I'll be there all day. Seven until 11. And that's not at 7:00 AM, 11:00.
You can record that. Exactly. Great. Item six.
The recognized school bus transportation in February. There's a, there's a national program called Love the Bus Program, and it's sponsored by the American School Bus Council. The Love the Bus Program celebrated in February as a way to raise awareness about school bus transportation. It's important to note that we recognize that the job that our bus drivers do is incredibly difficult. They're, they're, they are in charge of our most precious resources in getting them to and from school in the safest way possible. They are heavily trained, they work very hard at their job to make sure that they're getting our kids to where they need to go safely. It's just important to recognize the work that they do because we're so desperate for that, for other people to consider doing this job. As you know, we, we shared with the community earlier this, earlier last week that we have had some illness sweep through our, our, our bus driver ranks. We're down a good four or five drivers, and we can't really afford to be down that number of drivers. We are at such razor-thin margins for our staffing that we have had to combine routes, we've had to delay some students getting home so that buses can take a load of kids, drop them off, and come back and get another load of kids, and then take them home. We are, we've done lots of different things to encourage people to, to sign up to be bus drivers. We now do paid trainings, which is something that we didn't do before. We have, we have made it so that experienced drivers can earn more, they can come in at a higher level so that it, it can be commensurate with pay that they might have been getting elsewhere, so that we can encourage more people to, to come in. We have, through these new efforts, we have added four new drivers, but those drivers are in various, in the training process. It takes quite a while. It takes, it takes months, and then with the tests and the onboarding that you have to do. It's not just you take a test and you go in there, that's just phase one. Then there's a whole training process about driving, learning to do the entire inspections that you have to do, and you have to remember those things as part of your test to know where all those things are. I don't want to make it sound like it is, it is really hard, because I don't want to discourage anybody from trying to do it, but they are very well-trained, and they are prepared to, to drive your kids once they go through that training process. That four drivers isn't actually going to increase our ranks because we're going to have other drivers that are coming off due to retirements. So it really is keeping us at a level that if we don't get an increased number of drivers, we're going to have to make adjustments to our transportation program, reducing the number of routes that we have, which means we might have to look at who we can transport and who we can't. We're not there yet, but we are taking a very hard look at that because if we have to make those changes, we want to notify families earlier rather than later.